Sergeant, sergeants, sergeants, sergeants please have the members report to the council so that we can begin today's session. I do want to thank Mr. Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Weezer, Corretz, Laban, Martinez, O'Farrell for being here early. Mr. Laban. Mr. Corretz, Paul, Paul, would you just let me go right before you?
Good morning, this is Friday, October 10th, this is the Los Angeles City Council, we're in the John F. R. Chambers, please recognize the President of the City Council and our fine representative from Animal Services Department for a special presentation at this time.
I'm gonna do my, uh, in fact, one... Good morning, uh, before we, uh, go into a very, very important presentation where it relates to world health, I have, uh, a surprise, and the reason why I kinda got in here now is because I, when I have a pet adoption, I like to, uh, speak when we have a full house, because somebody behind me, she's a liquor, may, uh, somebody behind me may adopt this gorgeous young lady here. It's, it's my, uh, I've been told that in our shelters, we've named her Honey. Honey is about 11 months old, she's ready to go today, shots and, and all. Uh, this is as big as, uh, she's going to get. It, it would appear that she gets along well with, uh, other animals and young people, and if you're looking for unconditional love, plus a beautiful, beautiful companion animal, I highly recommend that you, uh, adopt Honey. Honey will be available in the back for a while, uh, in case, uh, you wanna come and talk to her or pet her or send a photo to your significant, uh, other, or, or your mom or dad who are in charge of the, the household to give permission to, uh, bring Honey home. But I do wanna say, at the City of Los Angeles, we've been doing this for almost nine years, we have a 100% adoption rate where it relates to our dogs, and we wanna keep that, uh, record going. Uh, if you are looking for unconditional love, someone that will love you even when you forget to maybe walk her, uh, a little late on giving her her dinner, they will always be at home waiting and looking forward to your return. So anybody, I'd say about 80% of our animals are adopted by people that are actually here in the council chambers. So with that said, we're looking for, uh, a home for Honey. Like I said, she's not that heavy, looks like she does not shed, so she could be a keeper. So if anybody's interested, Arlene here, who has been with us for many years, will be in the side with Honey, so if, if you'd like to adopt her, please come in the back, let us know, and let's get the paperwork rolling. So by the time today's, uh, meeting is over, let's make a pledge to find Honey a home. Honey, is there anything that, that you wanna say?
Yes, the phone number is 888-452-7381.
See now, Honey can, Honey speaks.
And all you have to do is run a mile.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, and that number is 888-452-7381. And we thank Arlene and all our Animal Services representatives, give them a hand, and all our volunteers for Animal Services. Number one volunteer is Herb Wesson. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum, let's go through the agenda, please.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadi, O'Fuentes, Weezer, Corretz, Corretz, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 12 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
That would be approval of the minutes.
Mr. O'Farrell moves, Ms. Martinez seconds.
That brings us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscaino moves, Mr. Blumenfeld seconds.
Mr. President, items one and two are items for which public hearings have been held.
Any, uh, specials on one or two members? Seeing none, let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes, thank you.
Mr. President, items three through six are items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Let's, uh, for consideration, open the roll.
Or, Mr. President, if I may, you, you could certainly do that without objection, if you'd prefer.
Without objection, if you'd like, but I also have, uh, two members up, Mr. O'Farrell.
Mr. President, item five special, please.
Item five special, and Mr. Buscaino.
Item four, please, for Janet Shower Day, item number four, please.
Yeah, item, uh, item number four, four and five, very good, next item.
Mr. President, we do have cards on all items in that section.
All right, so let's hold those for, call them special.
That would take us to presentations.
Presentations, thank you very much. Mr. Corretz for the 5th District, and I see the former 5th District Representative there as well, and, very good, Mr. Fier, our city attorney. Hey, well, before you do, let's welcome our city attorney, Mike Fier, right now, former council member, thank you. Mr. Corretz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I'd ask, uh, council member O'Farrell to, uh, join me up here. Um, as, uh, council member O'Farrell and I, as well as the City of Los Angeles, are here to recognize today, October 10th, as World Mental Health Day. We're joined by NAMI LA, which is LA's branch of the largest grassroots mental health organization in our country, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, and by Each Mind Matters, which is California's mental health movement, including hundreds of organizations. Today, we can and must do our utmost to raise awareness, show our support, and fight the stigma that is faced every day by people affected by mental illness, and that includes their families and loved ones. It's time for us Angelinos to take the lead, as we did with AIDS, in erasing the stigma associated with mental illness. Major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, anxiety disorder, post-traumatic stress disorder, attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, or A D H D, and borderline personality disorder are serious and persistent biological brain disorders, and those with such conditions need our compassion, empathy, and understanding. They are not lesser persons because of what they endure, so let's stop shaming them for their illness, so they won't ever hesitate to seek help. They need us to stand up for them, to fight for their medical rights, and assist them with their recovery. They need to look to us to honor those who have lost their lives due to their illness. If you look around you, 1 in 4 adult Americans and 1 in 10 children are suffering, as are their families, and that's why we need to support and applaud crucial efforts such as the National Alliance for Mental Health and Each Mind Matters. Their shared vision of mental wellness and equality helps save lives. And I suspect almost everybody here has had some connection to these illnesses. I have had relatives, I've had some friends, and certainly friends who were parents of children, um, who eventually developed, uh, these illnesses, and this is serious, and we need to give our support. I wanna mention one particular reason, among many equally important ones, for prioritizing mental health awareness. Our nation has been devastated by a long-lasting and ongoing epidemic of gun violence, and I'm the first to say that's because we allow distressingly easy access to guns and increasingly higher-powered weaponry. However, with each incident, we become more and more hauntingly aware that many of these tragedies might have been averted if there had been more proactive help, care, and understanding regarding mental health issues. Needless to say, the great majority of people with mental health challenges are peaceful and loving and will remain so, even despite the destruction and pain they may feel, and even if they're not given help. But the costs as a society, when we look the other way, are immense to all and can really run the gamut. So we're here today to raise awareness and tell you there is hope for recovery. Thousands have come here together to stand up for their families and friends, and we invite you to join in as we stand united here today to declare October 10th as World Mental Health Day. And now I'd like to ask, uh, my friend and colleague, uh, council member Mitch O'Farrell to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Paul. Colleagues, I am very glad to stand here with Paul Corretz, our general manager of the Department of Disability, Stephen David Simon, and the National Alliance for Mental Illness and Each Mind Matters, to raise awareness and support to the people affected by this illness, but not just only them, but their families. As Paul alluded to, nearly 60 million Americans experience a mental health condition every year, 60 million. Regardless of race, age, religion, economic status, mental illness impacts the lives of at least 1 in 4 adults and 1 in 10 children across the United States. People living with mental illness need help, hope, and they need our support. They need a community that supports them, their families, and their recovery. It is a highly treatable medical condition, affecting the brain and requiring the same concern in treating as cancer, heart disease, diabetes, and other major, major illnesses. As the Chair of the Committee who oversees health-related matters, I applaud the efforts by our City's Department on Disability and National Alliance for Mental Illness and Each Mind Matters for their tremendous work to end stigma of mental health. And speaking of stigma, I have a very close relative, this is back in the 1960s, uh, and she was institutionalized, a beautiful, beautiful person, now of an advanced age, who lived a full, wonderful life, raised a wonderful family, one of my favorite persons in the whole world, my Aunt Maxine, and she had to endure stigma. Let's remove the stigma from mental illness once and for all. On that note, I would like to bring Stephen David Simon, the General Manager of the Department of Disability, to say a few words, thank you.
Good morning, uh, council members, thank you so much for taking the time to recognize World Mental Health Day. It's so important that this city never say that mental health issues are somebody else's problem. It's, it's, there are issues that impact our workforce, they impact our constituents, they impact our communities, our friends, our families, have particular impact on our returning veterans, and I really want to just, just assure you that the City Department on Disability will redouble our efforts to make sure that when we're working on making sure that city programs, services, and facilities are accessible, that we include mental health issues in that work. I look forward to hearing from the leadership of the National Alliance on Mental Illness on how the city can be of even greater service, so thank you again for making this effort.
Thank you very much, Mr. Steve Simon, for the great work you and your department do.
Now I'd like to introduce, uh, Brittany, Brittany Weissman, who's the Executive Director of NAMI LA.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, I'm here to thank the City Council for recognizing World Mental Health Day in Los Angeles. A special thanks to, uh, council members Bonin, Corretz, and Mitch O'Farrell for recognizing World Mental Health Day, which means a lot, not just to NAMI, but to everyone in this room. If you look around, almost 1 in 4 people are affected by mental illness, this could be yourself, suffering in silence, or being out, or a friend or family member. NAMI exists to provide free support programs and mental health education to the communities within LA, to bring together people who are experiencing signs and symptoms of mental illness in, in line with hope and recovery, knowing that hope and recovery are possible for everybody, uh, that are suffering, and in order to do that, we are marching tomorrow through the streets of downtown Los Angeles as part of the NAMI Walk. It's our 11th year doing this, and we're very pleased to have our opening ceremonies in Grand Park right across the street. We hope you'll join us tomorrow at 9:00 AM for the NAMI Walk in LA, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody's wanting to come.
And now, uh, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, uh, Mr. O'Farrell and myself would like to present, uh, this resolution declaring World Mental Health Day in the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corretz, it's a very special group of people. Next, I wanna call on Mike Bonin, who has a very extra-special group of people, an extra-special month.
Mr. President, before, uh, moving on, there's been a request from a member to send item one forthwith.
Fourthwith, item one, fourthwith.
Let's get, uh, yep, all the domestic violence, violence folks, Carol, Mr. Fier, Mr. Fier's here. Okay. Uh, good morning, colleagues, uh, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Los Angeles, and there's probably never been a time when domestic violence has been as much on the minds of the American public as it is right now, because of all the news of what's been happening with football players and news in the NFL. But most domestic violence doesn't get that much attention, most domestic violence doesn't get that much coverage. Very rarely do you have domestic violence that is caught on videotape, that is played on the evening news, that is the subject of coverage in the sports pages. Most of it, domestic violence is quiet and insidious, taking an emotional and psychological as much as a physical toll. Imagine how horrible it is for a woman to go home and have the place in the world that she is most afraid of be her home, the place where she's supposed to find the most comfort. Imagine being a young child, and when daddy comes home from work, you don't run to the door to give a hug and a kiss, you cower in your room. Domestic violence is pervasive, and there's too much of it. In 1994, the City Council, Mark Ridley Thomas, and Marvin Browdy, and Rita Walters, formed the City's Domestic Violence Task Force to coordinate domestic violence policy and program development among the city departments and other public and private partners. Around the same time, Dr. Marjorie Browdy, the wife of Councilman Marvin Browdy, and herself a, a, a mental health specialist, initiated a landmark conference on domestic violence that was attended by more than 450 police officers and social workers, by judges and by doctors and by victims advocates. She called for greater coordination with all these programs, nonprofits, and the justice system, and she became, uh, the first chair of the task force, which is 20 years old. Since then, so much has happened. We've all appointed members to a task force, our city agencies have worked together, our LAPD and our city attorney have worked together, we have standing here 49 members of the LAPD who are part of their volunteer unit, a domestic abuse response team. They're all gonna be honored individually up in the Bradley Tower after this ceremony. Uh, we're also gonna give a certificate this morning to the winner of this year's Marjorie Browdy Award, but before we do that, I'd like to hear from my colleague, Mr. Blumenfeld, and our city attorney, Mr. Fier.
Thanks very much, Mr. Bonin. As we said in the City Hall rotunda at an earlier ceremony today, uh, this issue of combating domestic violence is an issue that in too many households is suppressed, in too many neighborhoods not talked about enough. We in public service have an opportunity to raise the visibility of the issue, but we need to do more. And one of the challenges of this day, which is a call to action, is the question that each of us needs to contend with, what are we personally going to do in our private lives, in our public lives, to deter, combat, effectively grapple with domestic violence? In the City Attorney's Office, there are three key elements in our strategy, but that begins with the recognition that we have more than 200 cases a week that we evaluate, more than 11,000 a year regarding domestic violence, and as Chief Beck indicated, uh, at a press conference he and I held a couple weeks ago and again this morning, that number can be escalating now, because he notes about an 18% increase in domestic violence incidents here in Los Angeles this year alone. In addition to prosecuting cases, both involving spousal abuse and the endangerment of our kids, our office can do more. First, we are riveted on assuring that no domestic violence perpetrator has a weapon, and we have worked with our police department and justice system to develop a protocol to assure just that. Second, there is a deep and wide recognition emerging now that gang violence and domestic violence are deeply tied together. Eve Shidi, who chairs the task force on that connection in our office and is providing tremendous leadership on that, has started to work, and we created a symposium we held recently, among others, with gang intervention strategists, talking about how we can make their work more effective while we identify the connection between domestic abuse and gang activity. Third, many of us have discussed the impact of domestic violence on spouses. When it comes to kids, kids who grow up in neighborhoods pervaded with violence or households pervaded with violence do not have their brains developed the way they were biologically intended to do. Their destiny is forever altered by this violence, and our office and others and you and our city to work together to assure that kids exposed to violence are not traumatized forever, that we as adults don't consign them never to fulfill their destiny because we have failed to organize their neighborhoods and failed to intervene in their households properly. These are the steps we can take together, there's so much more. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and, and thank you, uh, Mr. Bonin, for, for putting other issues, that you deal with as a council. A majority of homeless women are domestic violence victims, and approximately 63% of those women have experienced domestic violence. The rate of interpersonal violence among HIV-positive women was double the national rate. As City Attorney mentioned, children exposed and are victimized by violence at home often join gangs because they're looking for a family. One in 10 high school students has been purposely, purposefully, excuse me, hit, slapped, or physically hurt by a boyfriend or girlfriend, and children exposed to violence do not grow up or thrive as children who live in peace. As mentioned, the rate of domestic violence reports has gone up 18% in this city. To a large degree, we all rely on domestic violence agencies to address that increase. But we expect them to do that without resources and without providing them the concurrent financial support that they need to do their work. In fact, the domestic violence service providers of this city have had their funding decreased, and it continues to be decreasing. This is not tenable, and it's not fair. We know that the council recognizes that domestic violence is an important issue, but we ask you to recognize and support all of us that work to end domestic violence, and that includes the police, who are here, the city attorney's office, and the service providers, not just today, but every day, so that next year, instead of talking about an increase, we can talk about how we successfully collaborated to bring those numbers down. And my, I just want to... I do want to say a special thanks to our liaison, Councilman Mike Bonin, and also to council members Blumenfeld, Labange, Parks, and Buscaino, who have supported our event. Thank you very much.
So colleagues, I mentioned so much of this work got started 20 years ago by Dr. Marjorie Browdy. Every year, the task force gives an award in her name. This year, I'm proud that it's a Venice-based organization that is getting the award. Window Between Worlds is an organization based in Venice which helps give voice to the victims and the survivors of domestic violence to express themselves through art. They launched and they created the "I Can, We Can" campaign, which uses handprints in order to deliver a message about domestic violence. Some of their work is actually on display at the far end of the bridge today, near the Controller's Office, and I'm going to be inviting them to make a display in my field offices as well. I'd like to present them with their certificate here today.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Salsar. I'm founder and executive director of Window Between Worlds, and it's a tremendous honor to be before you. I accept this on behalf of all of the leaders. There are 300 leaders in eight districts throughout the city, leading art as a healing tool and a window of safety. As you've heard, domestic violence is one of the most difficult things to speak about and to create change, and so art becomes a window of safety that enables transformation. And it is the leaders in districts throughout Los Angeles making this happen on the frontlines every day. We are so grateful that art is part of transforming trauma. Thank you for this.
So colleagues, there's a reception in the Bradley Tower that the task force will be having starting at 11:00, and they will also be at that time honoring each of these heroic officers individually. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
And everyone there, and this continued success, I just want to mention that one of the most successful bumper stickers we had was "There's No Excuse for Domestic Abuse", and it was on every city car. And Mr. Bonin, I'll second your motion for that. And I want to thank all the police officers, and they're going to go up to the tower because you have the greatest badge of any law enforcement agency in the world, and that's the top of this grand city hall built in 1928. And the police department used to be all in this building at one time, years ago, but that's another story. Continue on, every day's a blessing, and just think of all the people that you're helping now because of the awareness that this continually brings. Thank you.
Thank you all so very, very, very much. I am looking for Mr. O'Farrell for our final and one of the most important presentations of the day. The floor is yours, Mr. Farrell.
Mabuhay. Ladies and gentlemen, today we honor and recognize Filipino-American History Month 2014.
Yay!
I stand here today with our colleague Jose Wezar, Philippine Council General Leo Herrera Lim, and Los Angeles Filipino-American City Employee President Linda Granados, the gorgeous lady on my left. Earlier this morning, we held a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Henry P. Rio Bridge of a photo art exhibit with the artist Bobby Romero depicting life in the Philippines during the United States occupation. It was 427 years ago this month, October of 1587, that the first Filipinos, or Luzon Indios, as they were known back then, arrived on a Spanish galleon near Morro Bay, California. Like Los Angeles, the Philippines was once a settlement in the Spanish Empire, and now Los Angeles is the home of the largest number of Filipinos outside of the Philippines, anywhere in the world. Throughout this nation's history, Filipinos have helped build this country's infrastructure, fought valiantly in our nation's armed services, served honorably in public office, and are now becoming staples in the entertainment community. More significantly, Filipino labor leaders Philip Vera Cruz and Larry Itliong and a large group of Filipino farmworkers played a pivotal role in the Delano Grape Strike of 1965, which led to the formation of the United Farm Workers Union. I am particularly proud to be here today as the representative of historic Filipino Town, a neighborhood that has been home to the Filipinos since the 1940s and served as a gateway for many Filipino immigrants in Los Angeles. Today, Hi-Fi, as it is affectionately known, remains as the cultural heart of the Filipino-American community in Los Angeles. It is my hope that this month will be a time of celebration, reflection, and rediscovery of the many significant contributions that Filipino-Americans have made in this country, this state, and the city of Los Angeles. I would now like to invite our colleague and friend Jose Wezar to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Councilmember O'Farrell, and thank you for your leadership in a number of Filipino-American events throughout the year. And this month is certainly special as we celebrate the Filipino-American Month to continue to celebrate their contributions to this great city and to this great country. I want to welcome all our guests here this morning, and I want to give a special recognition to Linda Granados and our city family, who are members of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees. Linda is the president of La Face, as we call it. So let's give all our members from La Face a big round of applause and all the employees, Filipino-Americans contributing to this great city. And also, we are honored, as Councilmember O'Farrell mentioned, to have with us Philippine Council General Leo Herrera Lim, here to celebrate this great occasion, always lending a hand, not only as his role as a council general, but also supporting many activities Filipino-Americans here in the city of Los Angeles. And this year, we have a great display, as Councilmember O'Farrell said, on the City Hall Bridge. I would invite all of you to go see this wonderful display that reminds us all of the great contributions and history of Filipinos. And as we look forward to the number of events this month, one of the great events we had just this past weekend was the Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture, and it came back to Grand Park. And what is interesting about that is that at Grand Park, we actually had one of the first settlements of Filipinos when they first arrived to the city of Los Angeles. So it was quite a historical event, not only to celebrate Filipino culture, but also to give a big welcome home in one of the areas in central Los Angeles where we once called many, for many Filipinos, once called home. So to all our Filipino friends, I say, "Mabuhay, your history is our history, and today we celebrate everything Filipino and Filipino-American." Congratulations. Thank you very much.
And before I introduce our very distinguished guest today, I just want to acknowledge our city council president, Mr. Herb Wesson. Look what he's wearing, this beautiful barang.
That's the most they've seen him move up there in the chair.
Mitch and I, Mitch, we're twins. We're twins today.
President Wesson, your supermodel days are not that far behind you. Just keep that in mind. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our friend, Council General Herrera Lim. Thank you.
Mr. President, thank you very much for the honor. Councilmembers, for honoring our community who are based here in LA and for the many or thousands of Filipinos who work for the city of LA every day. They're the proud face of Filipinos daily, and especially on this day. I think when Mitch and Herb was born, they had Filipino doctors that changed their heart and had the first transplant and converted them to become Filipinos, so that this day will come for us, that we jointly celebrate the shared values of Filipinos and Americans here in LA. As Mitch said, there's a fantastic photo exhibit on the Bridgeway, and probably in the future, one of those photos would be a photo of this council with the city president wearing proudly our national costume. So thank you very much for this honor for our people and our country, and our two countries together. Mabuhay ang Pilipinas, mabuhay ang America. God bless the Philippines, God bless America.
Thank you. And Mitchell, I do, with the deepest respect, I wear this at the barang, and for my former chief of staff, who was Filipino and passed away, I think about every day, I wear this. And so this day, this month, is always special to my office and myself. So I'm glad that you're here. I'm glad to see Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Wezar kind of pick up the mantle and keep this celebration going. It means a lot to me personally, so congratulations, and let's continue to work together. Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to say what a wonderful thing to remember, your chief of staff, Charlotte Matt, and all the beauty that she brought, this chamber. I just wanted to rise all the employees, because it's with the employees of Los Angeles we're able to get it done. I say salamat. And also, I want to thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for your leadership, and Mr. Wezar, with the historic Filipino signs. Now our freeways, as well as in the neighborhoods, it's showing a place, and this is the beauty of Los Angeles, is many places. So I just wanted to rise and thank each and every one of you for the good work that you're doing in this month, and so good to see you. You're the veteran. Okay, good job. Thank you. Salamat.
And so on that note, speaking of carrying on the tradition of Los Angeles city workers of Filipino descent, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the president of La Face, Linda Granados.
Madam President.
Council President Wesson, we are very flattered that you wore the Filipino barang, and maybe next year, Councilman Wezar...
I will buy you one, Mr. Wezar.
Okay. Honorable council members, Council General Herrera Lim, La Face board members and employees, to everyone here today, greetings and good day to you all. So I'm Linda Granados again, the president of La Face, and I'd like to thank Councilman Mitch O'Farrell of City 13 and Councilman Jose Wezar of City 14 for sponsoring this event and the exhibit currently showing, and also for the entire council for designating October as Philippine-American History Month. The month of, the month of October was established to commemorate the first documented landing of Filipinos in what is now known as the continental USA over 25 years ago. This exhibit provides an opportunity to all peoples in the United States, especially second and third generation, to know about their history and culture. And as in true Filipino tradition, we invite everyone for some refreshments at around, you know, after this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Granados, Council General Lim, Mr. Wezar. It gives me great pleasure, we are now going to honor you with this certificate of recognition for Filipino-American History Month. Congratulations. Thank you.
Smile, cheese.
This one goes to the Asian Journal, the other one's our Facebook.
And Mr. President, I think I won't wear my barang next year. The photo looked really nice, except for the suit in the middle, so I'll wear my barang next year.
I just want also to recognize Captain Graham, the highest-ranking Filipino.
Oh, let's give him a round of applause. Captain. Captain.
Good morning. I'm very honored to have been acknowledged to be the first captain in the Los Angeles Police Department of Filipino descent. In 1992, my grandmother, who was in the later stages of Alzheimer's disease, we put her on a plane back to our home province of Aklan because the clarity of her memories of where she grew up was much better than the memories that she was having there, and we knew that that would be a much better time for her. And as her condition degraded over the years, we kept in touch with her as best as we could. In November of 1995, when I graduated from the Los Angeles Police Academy, I sent her those photos from my graduation. And my uncle told me that on that day, she achieved clarity again and was showing off my pictures to all of her friends. "Look at my grandson, look at my grandson." So I know that she's up there now, and she's looking down, and how proud not only she is of her grandson, but of her people. Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you, Captain, and we expect for you to bring the captain back when he's commander and deputy. And so we want to afford your grandmother the opportunity to look down and smile on you. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
No pressure, right, councilman?
No. You'll be fine. Anyway, one more round of applause. Thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Jose. As they're exiting to the back, if I could look to Mr. Bu... Oh, there he is, Mr. Buscaino. I'll be going to back.
Can we take item four? Can we take item four, sir? Thank you, Mr. President.
Item four, Mr. Buscaino, we have three cards. We will take the cards at the end.
Thank you. Colleagues, this item before you will designate... Colleagues, this item before you will designate October 11th as the Janet Shower Day, a true hero and champion in the Harbor Gateway community. Before us, we have members of the Harbor Gateway South Neighborhood Council, the MAC Group, who wish to honor our beloved Janet Shower for her contribution to the community by ultimately declaring October 11th Janet Shower Day. Janet Shower, a true pillar in the Harbor Gateway community, she was 84 years young. She was born in Point Marion, Pennsylvania, moved to Los Angeles in 1950, and settled into Harbor Gateway in 1951, and has remained there since her passing last year, September 27th, 2013. In 1963, Janet graduated from Harbor College, Harbor College's nursing program, and worked at the Torrance Memorial Hospital for 25 years. She went off to retirement in 1991, and since that time, has done tremendous work as a volunteer in the Harbor Gateway community, including serving in the Park, the Police Advisory Board, the LAPD Harbor Division, and helping to distribute food to low-income families at the local Boys and Girls Club, the Cheryl Green Boys and Girls Club. One of Janet's, Janet really was involved in the community due to the horrific hate crime that took Cheryl Green's life in Harbor Gateway, and that motivated her even more to bring the community together, to have that sense of unity and community, and call for peace in the Harbor Gateway area. She was dedicated to improving the quality of life for the residents of Harbor Gateway, in particular, for the young people of the community. She was everyone's grandmother and mother. She was instrumental in the building of Harbor Gateway's first pocket park, which was named in her honor. In 2012, we named her the Pioneer Woman of the Year, not only because her love and compassion, but for her selfless involvement in the community. She was one of my earliest supporters, going so far to host meetings in my honor, to get the community invested in my campaign for this office, and making homemade signs that she would post in her front lawn, encouraging people in the Harbor Gateway to support my candidacy. She had no children, but all the children that she served in the community all called her grandma. She was, she's led the effort, again, in making sure, Harbor Gateway is such a park park community, and she led the effort, along with members of the community before me, and also in my partnership with Mike Scholl and the Department of Recreation and Parks in my office, to call for a pocket park in Harbor Gateway. She was loved by everyone who she encountered along her life. The world is a lesser place without Janet Shower and the whole Harbor Gateway South community. We all miss her warmth, her spirit, her smile, but we're all richer for having the privilege of knowing Janet Shower. And today, once this item is approved, we will declare October 11th as the Janet Shower Day. And Mr. President, I believe we have someone to speak on this item four, which is the, our Dunn Commissioner, one of our Dunn Commissioners, Commissioner Victor Medina.
Yeah, for the record, Victor Medina, please.
Well, good morning, Council President, Council Members, Councilman Joe Buscayeno. We stand here in front of everybody, and I want to say thank you for carrying this lovely motion to a great angel and to a great loving person, which is Janet Shower, dedication of that day. First of all, let me just talk a little bit, Councilman kind of touched everything, but I want to show you, this is Janet Shower, this is the picture taken about a year and a half, when she was pretty much named Pioneer Woman of the Year. Like Councilman said, she served as a neighborhood council for many years, she sat on the CPAD member for many years as well, and also served member. Besides that, though, she was a community person who opened her arms, opened her house to anybody who needed help, and she is, and we miss her daily, we miss her, you know. But today, we want to say just, you know what, to everybody, this is Janet Shower, who pretty much came to the community, like Councilman also said, to a community which it was pretty much a lot of violence, a lot of racial stuff happening, and she created the MAC Group, which stands Mary Ann Cypher, and pretty much what that meant is bringing everybody, bringing politics, bringing police officers, and opening the doors, and meeting at her house to solve this issue for many years. And she did a lot of great things, you know. One of the biggest things she did was to open up a park in that community. And she said, "When that park is open, I'm ready to close my eyes." And when that park was built a couple months, she passed away on us. We miss her a lot, but today, we stand in front of you to honor her, pretty much, her legacy, and we want to say, please, you know, we ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buscayeno.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I see Daisy Ibarra, who is part of our team, who just loved Janet, and just know Daisy that she is, she's humbled, and she's probably saying right now, "Why in the heck are you doing this for me?" Because that's who Janet Shower was. So colleagues, I want to thank the community for coming out to support Janet Shower Day. And I know you have two more speakers, what we'll do, we'll clear out and come together as a community.
Sergeant, could you assist the group as well? We have two cards, first, Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Weezer, yes?
Introduction of some guests.
Mr. Walsh is coming in right now.
You called him already, I didn't know that.
At the podium, if you can hold for a minute, Mr. Walsh.
After Mr. Walsh, that's fine.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, or at Hollywood Dems for endorsements. We'd just like to simply say, echo everything that was said about Janet Shower Day, and we need, in Hollywood, we have some people we would like to Chris Chappelle Day. HollywoodHighlands.org, you're doing an excellent job on day naming.
Thank you on Chris Chappelle, wonderful activist, Mr. Walsh, it's the finest thing you've said in a long time. Mr. Ick, next card here is Juan Icaula.
I wish to speak only one minute on this item, City Clerk, only one minute on this I will honor Janet Shower by taking a shower every day, and, well, it's a good way to remember. Hey, you celebrate your way, I'll celebrate mine, City Attorney. Huh?
He is not talking about the thing.
Thank you very much, that completes the public comment. Let's open the roll on that, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes. Mr. Weezer, for a quick introduction, and then a very special presentation from Mr. Corretts. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, I'm very happy to introduce today the Orchestra Sinfonica de Manta, visiting us from Ecuador. If you could please stand up. They are all students from the Cultural Department of the University of Laika, Eloy Alfaro de Manabi, in Ecuador. They are visiting Los Angeles this week as part of Latino Heritage Month, and earlier this week, stopped by the Monterey Park Amphitheater, La Puente City Council, and today, Los Angeles City Council Chambers. They're accompanied by their musical director, Mr. Jose Hernán Gil Medina. Let's give them a big round of applause, and welcome to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Ben Monides, our friends from Ecuador. Mr. President, Mr. Weezer.
Make a quick announcement that our pet for today, Honey, has been adopted by Lisa Flores, who's an executive assistant to Ms. Martinez. So our 100% dog adoption rate is alive, thanks to the offices of Nuri Martinez.
And Mr. Wesson, thank you.
And the dog is upstairs in Nuri's office right now, on her desk.
Very good, very good, thank you, Mr. Wesson. Finally, now, Mr. Paul Corretts of the 5th District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone who works here realizes quickly that the city news service is, in many ways, a key part of the glue that holds City Hall and city governments together. And over the years, we've had many great and gifted reporters sitting in the City Hall Bureau Desk of City News Service, and our most recent journalist holding down that chair has been an incredibly intrepid, and resourceful, and diligent, and caring reporter named Elizabeth Cho. Now, very quietly this past month, Liz got married to a lucky gentleman named Jason Wong, and I believe they tied the knot on September 6th, and on behalf of the entire City Council, as well as the mayor, city attorney, and city controller, all of whom signed this certificate, I'm delighted to present Elizabeth with a symbol of our city's high regard for her, and we wish them both great happiness and prosperity now and in the future.
Great job there, Mr. Corretts, Elizabeth, give her a big hand there.
And I think this was a surprise.
It was a surprise. Put it out on the wire, I want all the people to know about Elizabeth. Great, great wedding, thank you.
That brings us to item three, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, for identification purposes only, the Chair of the statewide No on Every Single Proposition Committee. Number three, again, this is REAP. I hate to sound like a broken record, but you've done, you do an excellent job in REAP. I remember when Han was mayor, he inspected every single unit under his administration in the city. We have more units than any county in, any city in America, of course, New York is one county, it's five counties. So you're doing an excellent job. Remember, I say to all landlords, if you do not keep your apartments up to code, the city will take your rent and put it in their pocket till you start repairing the units. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Just thank you again, Arnold Sachs, and again, I reiterate with this program, the cost for inspections, and the cost to pay the personnel needed for the REAP program, and the fact that you get a lot of stories sometimes in the L.A. Times, and it would be fascinating to take the two stories that I refer to. One was about the inspector going out and checking on plastic bag violations, and the other story was about checking about inspectors going out.
Mr. President, he's not talking about the rent escrow.
All right, Mr. Sachs, specific to this, Mr. Sachs.
Specific to this, it mentions getting back the cost for inspection of the properties. Getting back those costs involves personnel, I believe, I'm correct so far? So if you're involving personnel, and you're getting back the cost, and you have personnel to go out and inspect for dumbass plastic bags, why don't you have personnel to go out and inspect homes that are in foreclosure? And again, it's a matter of quality of life issues. The previous speaker said something about keeping up your property, but if you have a foreclosed property in your neighborhood and it's not kept up...
Mr. President, this is not about REAP.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs, you're out of line. Sergeant, tell these people to sit down. Mr. Herman is jumping up and down and disrupting the meeting. Thank you.
I wish to speak only one minute, he was just walking across, he was not jumping up and down. You stand corrected, sir, I only want one minute. By the way, I do not agree with anything the city does regarding housing. I do not agree with your REAP program, I do not agree with your foreclosure program, I do not agree with your lean program, I do not agree that the city should be involved in housing at all. You should not. You're a bunch of ripoffs, ripping off everybody, and that's all you know how to do, and you drive your limos and all that, City Attorney.
He is not referring to REAP.
Ladies and gentlemen, the city has done an excellent job, as John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org has mentioned, but incidentally, we still have the problem of bad housing in the city of Los Angeles. Infestation, inhabability, and the worst part about it, the homeless population cannot even rent in the city of Los Angeles, and that's a damn shame, when we have people who need a home, regardless of their background of being homeless, or VAs, more so, the disabled population. So within one minute, I'm saying to you, continue the good work with REAP, take the money from bad, hungry landlords who abuse the system, and put us out on the streets. Thank you, and keep your one minute.
That completes the public comment. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Mr. Bloomingfield, for a very special group of people from a very special part of the city.
Yeah, I just want to announce, we have, even though it's quite loud, in the back, we've got 50 adults and seniors from Pierce College Adult Encore Program, who can stand up and be recognized, we appreciate you making it out here. You know, you got to listen a little bit to some of the public testimony, we hear, we, you know, we do substantive work on issues as well, but we also, we hear all sorts of comments, so, but I appreciate that you're here, and thank you for coming.
Well, thank you very much, Bob, and I hope you tell them, go back there and tell them to go up to the Tom Bradley Tower, and special recognition to our Angelino's right here, wave your hand, our Angelino, give a special tour there, give her a big hand, forgive me for not calling you by name. Mr. O'Farrell, we're going to call item number five at this time, followed by cards.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Steven David Simon, our General Manager for Disability, makes his way up, and he is in the House, I understand, I just want to say that for over 20 years, the city's had a collective charitable effort, which has combined the efforts of many of our own respected and successful charitable agencies within Los Angeles. Starting a few days ago, the Combined Charitable Campaign will raise funds for over 400 member organizations, a diverse group that addresses needs ranging from healthcare, the environment, education, and poverty. Additionally, the campaign will offer city employees an opportunity to give to a charity, whether through a gift or a payroll deduction. Each year, the campaign has been overseen by a department of the city of Los Angeles. This year, the campaign is to be chaired by the Department on Disability. Steven is going to speak a little bit, give some details about this program. Steven?
Hi, good morning again, thank you. You know, the council member covered it, I just want to sort of add a couple of highlights to that. You know, we're joined this morning by some of the most respected, successful, and important organizations in Los Angeles and across the United States, and they're here to ask for your help. Together, we need to get the message out to all city employees about the extraordinary work that they do. The city's supported this campaign for two decades, as you just heard, and for good reason. It improves the quality of life for Angelinas across all our neighborhoods, and it's just about the easiest way and most effective way for city employees to give back to our communities. It's not an obligation, but it's an opportunity, an opportunity to move a few hard-earned dollars through payroll deductions, and seamlessly leverage them into extraordinary work. The campaign started officially this Monday, and your action today is truly the kickoff, it will run through November 14th, so I asked you to join me, commit to working with my fellow general managers, and a full range of city employees, to make the campaign effective by making it visible. Please, send those emails, post to social media, and let folks know how much this matters to you personally and the city. Briefly, I just want to point out our lead organizations this year, United Way of Greater Los Angeles, City of Hope, United Latino Fund, the Asian Pacific Community Fund, United Negro College Fund, Brotherhood Crusade, Community Health Charities, L.A. Foundation on Aging, American Cancer Society, and Earth Share. So thank you again for your leadership.
Mr. O'Farrell.
And, yes, Mr. President, some of the organizations that Steven just mentioned are represented by the folks standing up, and so they deserve our support, and also representatives from the Department of Disability, thank you for being here and representing.
Thank you very much.
So colleagues, I do ask for an eye vote for this very, very worthy cause and effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we do have some public comment cards, Juan Icaula.
Yes, considering Chair's vote, yeah. Considering charitable, yeah, we need charitable organizations because the government only rips us off, and the charitable organizations are the one making up the work that the city should be doing, that the government should be doing. The government prints the money. Why do you have to bother the people about money? What, what, what is this? Huh? If you print the money, why don't you just give yourself enough money so you leave the people alone? And the charities are doing the work for you. Hello? Why do we even need charities? We should all have enough to get along together. We shouldn't have to rely on charities to, to feed the homeless and other people. The government's job is not to rip the people off. The government's job is to help the people. We, the people.
He is not talking about this item.
John Walsh, the next speaker.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, for identification purposes, Chair of the Southern California No on Every Single Proposition Committee. Yes, again, another good job. You know, I arrived here in 1970, lived here briefly, and then moved back in '76. Payroll deductions will give to L.A. City of Los Angeles Combined Charitable Campaign. Excellent. We are interested in how many of the city council members and how many of the staff may take advantage of this deduction. I'm told that practically none of you up here are making payroll deductions to the Combined Charitable Campaign. Now, if I'm wrong, throw it in my face.
You're wrong. You're wrong, John. I'm not going to throw it at anybody. Thank you. Continue.
So you can say, you interrupt, you can say that Mr. Bonin definitely is, I didn't say you, I said some of you. I didn't say all of you. Mr. Bonin doesn't, HollywoodHighlands.org, and he won't disagree with me.
Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. And I believe the item refers to city employees deductions, and as elected officials, you're not really city employees, and your staffs, I don't believe, are city employees either. That being said, these deductions out of the payroll would be considered tax deductible because they're going to nonprofits. Nobody's going to correct that. So I'm wondering, why don't the city employees give deductions to the Department of Water Power to nonprofits that were making the news headlines? And/or, since these deductions are going to nonprofits and are considered non-tax, excuse me, and are considered tax deductible, then why can't the people who pay their DWP bills have those payments considered nonprofit payments? Because I'm sure they don't know that part of that payment is going to a nonprofit. And you're saying in this item that nonprofit payments are tax deductible. So people should be able to say, hey, I've been making payments for DWP for these safety committee, whatever the hell you want to talk about, and I'm not getting a tax deduction on it. I should be able to write my DWP bill off as a tax deduction just based on this item alone. Tax deduction, donation for a tax deduction purpose gives you an opportunity to write it off, and let the city attorney do something about it. Let the city attorney investigate it. Because as far as I remember, they were getting like $110 million for safety programs. Why $4 million a year? Because it's a big deal. No, it isn't.
Mr. Sacks, you live in Edison Country in Redondo Beach. You're not a-
I do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Herman.
So we're the highest paid, we are the highest paid consul in the city of Los Angeles, and yet none of you, none of you have contribute to the charity of Los Angeles for the charitable campaign. Yet you're the highest paid uncharitable people who want to give to the needy, again, programs with the greatest social and economic need within the city of Los Angeles, which is DOD, Department on Disability, for people with impairments and have no access to such charitable campaigning needs. So are all, all of you deducting, are city employees deducting from their payroll for this charitable cause? Because I find it with great emotion to say you're definitely wrong. And so, again, ask anyone here, anyone in the city, anyone in the city of Los Angeles, come here and ask this city, what contributions by the highest-paid $200,000 salary you have are being charitable? Being charitable is not your, your goal in this life because we wouldn't have such, the socioeconomic need, the socioeconomic need to help people with disabilities, number one. Number two, provide for our veterans, again, American citizens, our veterans who serve this country. And number three, Mr. Coretz is not here, but thank you from my bruised arm, general public comment.
Mr. Corrig, is that correct to the City of Hope? From the City of Hope? Ms. Marley?
Mary.
Mary, Mary, God forgive me, Mary.
No worries.
Mary of the City of Hope, and this gives me hope. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Mary Koenig. I'm the senior director for City of Hope's Employee Giving Department. I am here to speak on behalf of all the charitable organizations in the Los Angeles Combined Charitable Campaign to express our sincerest appreciation for the council to take the opportunity to embrace and support this campaign. The contributions that we receive through the generous employees of the city of Los Angeles are vital to the programs we provide in services to the homeless, in providing education opportunities, in providing medical cures for cancer, diabetes, HIV/AIDS, a number of diseases. With the donations that we receive at City of Hope, these funds are utilized for seed money for very exciting, cutting-edge research programs. The funds are also utilized for patient support programs, for the patient and family members to aid them through their journey of treatment. Without contributions that we receive, many of these programs would not be able to continue. So it is with deep appreciation that we have the opportunity to be here to say thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mary, and to thank all the people of the City of Hope. Vernon Webb for the Greater Los Angeles United Way. United Way of Greater Los Angeles, one of our partners on so many things. We love the United Way. And Elise Buick, you're a great CEO. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the city council, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your time and for your continued generosity in the charitable giving campaign for the city of Los Angeles. We appreciate all that the city employees have done to give to the campaign that allows our many organizations, such as the Brotherhood Crusade, the Asian Latino Fund, and all the rest, giving us that opportunity to help those members of our community who are less fortunate. We can only ask of you that you continue your generosity to supporting our groups, and we want to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank the United Way, and thank the employees of Los Angeles. And thank Mr. O'Farrell for being the liaison for us as council members and our mayor's office in the work. All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Eleven eyes. A fourth with on that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next item.
Mr. President, would you like to recess the regular and go into the special meeting?
Yes.
Very good, sir. Blumenthal, Bonnebois, Caino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Cresco, Crin, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 11 members present in a court, Mr. President. Mr. President, on the special agenda, today's items are seven and eight. They're items for which public hearings have been held.
Have been held. So we'll note these cards, and we should take seven and then eight?
Uh, what, it's your pleasure, sir.
Okay. We could take them together, seven and eight together? Members, any questions for seven and eight? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Eleven eyes, so ordered. Next item.
Sir, would you like to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
Yes.
Very good. That brings us to item six called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. I brought this issue up because Dr. Lucy Jones, yeah, she's very attractive, she's very smart, she's an earthquake expert, and she's bought off by the politicians. Now, on issues here in L.A., how is she bought up? Put in Dr. Lucy Jones, Google that, and MTA. She was hired by MTA as a prostitute to give the seal of approval on what? On building the tunnel under Beverly Hills High School, which has the largest percentage of Iranians in the United States, and most of them are Jewish, the largest percentage of Jews. Now, she's not a Jew. I am, through Bertha Berger, my, my grandmother. But she sold out, and when they start building that tunnel underneath the, underneath Beverly High School, what are you going to find? You're going to find exactly what happened when they were building a tunnel near Los Feliz Elementary. You're going to find at Barnesdale Park, you're going to find a collapse. And this was done so that the station would be across the street. That's what Lucy Jones was paid for, and that is in Century City, so the large Chicago developer that's hooked in with President Obama gets the money. It's on my website, just check it out. Dr. Lucy Jones has sold the blood of Iranians and Jews. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman. As he comes up, correction, the Barnesdale failure was due to a water break that caused it to break.
Excellent points, Mr. Walsh. But again, this is a motion through Wesson, Wezar, Englander, and Labange for Dr. Lucy Jones from the U.S. Geological Survey to respond to the efficiency and the effectiveness in the aftermath of an earthquake. So we must question ourselves, are we prepared for the next large earthquake? Are we really prepared? When we have water lines busting, we don't have enough volts to, to sustain us with electricity, and yet we're building infrastructure that's not up to code or up to, up to par because we red tape everything, such as in the aftermath, small shaking which occurred in Hollywood. And let us not forget the large earthquake that occurred in Los Angeles and areas in the valley where we saw total chaos, a crisis, a crisis, a crisis. So let us take into account that in November, we have motions to vote, and when we're voting, we're voting for adequate services, protection from, from devastation and disasters, Ebola, whatever, blah, blah, blah. So again, seismic safety from the U.S. Geological Survey to provide the city with the following updates, and so far, the overview is a joke because we're, 911 or 311 are always inundated with so much garbage that they can't filter out the safety, the protection for all the citizens in Los Angeles. So don't forget to vote. Neel Kashkari, thank you.
Juan Icaula, followed by Arnold Sacks. Arnold, if you'd be so kind to come closer, Arnold, when I call your name, please.
There is absolutely no way that we're prepared for a large earthquake. You know, it's, it's going to be chaos. And Lucy Jones, you can't predict nothing. Are you crazy? Geological Survey, you know, the powers of nature are so big that we, we don't even know how big an earthquake can be. So, you know, it's all bunk, 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 and it's a lot of good salaries for some people. That's all it is. So I could tell you, I could tell you, an earthquake can do a lot of damage. Look at Mexico City. Huh? But you are better than Mexico City, right? You think you are? That's bullshit.
All right, this, for the record, Mr. City Attorney, the court has ruled that's free speech. Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. I would, fine, call Lucy Jones, call Dr. Jones. My question would be, why not call some people from Japan who've suffered the same devastating earthquakes? What do their experts do? It's really difficult. You had this fire down in San Pedro, almost out of control in the local area. How will you get out this message? And as important as whatever message she decides to deliver, how will the city fund this message? Where will the money come from? With your quality budgeting, idea, planning, there's real, really no hope for any suggestion that she can come up with, except to spread your cheeks a little wider so you can stick your head up there. Really, serious stuff.
Okay, absolutely, yes. Seeing those speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, should we open the roll?
Yes, sir.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Ten eyes. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to items called Special. Excuse me, that brings us to general public comment for items not on today's agenda.
Okay, general public comment, it'll be a one-minute public comment. John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. As you know, the white man with blonde hair who stabbed to death Christine Calderon on Hollywood Boulevard, you know what he got from the judge? 12 years. Of course, a white man is allowed to stab brown and black people. I'm going to tell you, if it had been a black man who stabbed a white woman, he would have gotten the death penalty. That's what Hollywood, the Hollywood Walk of Fame is about. Just take a look at what's happening right here. Sheilacule for 100% for the supervisor. Come to our website now. All of our endorsements are up. They've been up since Tuesday. Vote no on all the propositions. Send a message. No, 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 no. Believe every no argument, and check out our candidates. And as far as the sinkhole is concerned that happened at Barnesdale, it was just a coincidence that it was right on top of the tunnel. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Victor Marino. Victor, did I mispronounce your last name? Marrero, thank you.
Honorable Assistant Pro-Tam Labange, my name is Vic Marrero. I'm an IBW Local 44, my rep, representing all communication electrician in the city of Los Angeles. I would like to bring you an attention to the Department of ITA is doing all of our, is doing to all of our brothers and sisters, union members, that put out an RFP to contract all the work to, that we do to maintain the city safe. While I worked for the city for 32 years, we always provided the best service for the police and fire department under various levels of difficulty. Every disaster in the city, we were always there supporting public safety. I myself experienced under civil unrest in the city, and my members were there, first responded, while others, companies doing work with the city did not come to our help. responded, while others, companies doing work with the city, did not come to our help. I would like the city council to look into this decision and report back to the Public Safety Committee. All of our members have loyalty to the city and all citizens of L.A. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Basharat Sahid, Basharat Sahid.
Good morning, Mr. President and city council members. My name is Basharat Sahid, and I'm an executive board member for the IBW Local Union 45. I'm here to speak about an RFP that was released by the ITA Department last month. The purpose of the RFP is to replace permanent employees of the city in the position of communication electricians and communication engineers with temporary contract workers. I am proud to be an employee and a citizen of this great city of angels. I agree that we need to tighten our belt in spending our tax revenue and save wherever it's reasonably possible, but we need to keep the public safety in mind whenever we are doing that. I fail to see the rationale behind this RFP. Where is the savings?
Finish your line, thank you.
Where is the savings when we are paying for the profit and the overhead of the contract workers?
Thank you. Gus Lehera, is that correct, Gus? And also, we have Kevin Broslin, is that correct, Kevin? Breslin, and then Brian Stedman, Brian Stedman, come on up, you're all from Local 45. Elaine Orozco, that's correct, please. Thank you, proceed.
Okay, good morning, city council members. My name is Gus Lehera. I am a city employee with ITA, assigned to support the 911 dispatch centers and public safety. My staff and I are the first responders to LAPD officers, 911 dispatchers, and the citizens of Los Angeles. As communications electricians, we are responsible to make sure the LAPD officers have two-way radios working properly. Also, that 911 dispatch equipment is working so that 911 operators are able to take 911 calls and dispatch the call to officers and firefighters. On September the 5th, the Valley 911 Center lost all power to all critical emergency dispatching equipment. Communications electricians, as the first responders, reestablish public safety communication equipment and minimize the impact to the citizens of Los Angeles and to the police officers. Communications electricians in the 911 dispatch center and other ITA units are proving again that they're valued to public safety, no contractors.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Kevin Breslin. I'm a resident of L.A. for over nine years. I work at the LAX, I've been an employee of the city for 16 years. We have contractors there, and during 9/11, the contractor ordered all their employees to go home. So that left us with a reduced staff and at higher risk of problems. Luckily, nothing happened. We also had an incident where a contractor who worked for the city, was contracted for the city for several years, got employed by the city when, after he was employed, it was found out he had a background check, through the background check, he was fired because he had a criminal history, and that's, leaves the city at risk. And then also, we've had employees at the airport who have been employed by four different companies, and every time a new company comes in, they lose their benefits and they have to start over again, so that's not, that's not right. I hope that the RFP can be retracted and, thank you.
Thank you. Elaine?
Yes, thank you, council members. My name is Elaine Ocasio, I'm the Business Manager, Financial Secretary of IBW Local 45. I represent communication electricians who work for the city of Los Angeles. Under the umbrella of the L.A. Orange County Building Trades Council, we started negotiations for a new MOU this past July, and on September 19th, the city put out a RFP to contract out the work performed by my members. This is blatant bad faith bargaining. How can the representatives of the city sit across from the table and honestly say you want to come to an agreement and then turn around and try to give our jobs away? Local 45 Communication Electricians work in police and fire dispatch and communications and command post, all areas related to public safety. Do you really want public safety in the hands of contractors? I understand the desire to cut costs, but at what price? Do you want to put safety, indeed the lives of our citizens, in the hands of the lowest bidder? I urge you to not contract out our work.
Thank you very much. Chris Stedman?
Hey, good morning, council. Frank, how's my volume? Attaboy. I'm gonna speak also about this RFP. I like to say that I was born in Iowa and grew up in communications here in L.A. Developed a lot of relationships with vendors, with the customers, which is PD, Fire, GSD, all the people that help with resolutions of issues with the public safety dispatch section. There's a lot of knowledge, guys, and it helps us to have those inroads built already, established, to resolve these problems in a quick and timely manner. If we lose that and we bring contractors onboard, you're gonna lose that village knowledge, you're gonna lose all those inroads, and the time of repair is gonna be out, you know, something not appreciated by the citizens of Los Angeles, let's put it that way. So again, when you're discussing this with the ITA, keep this in mind, okay? Appreciate that, thank you.
All right. This is a call for everybody to look into your souls right now and just ask yourself, we have all the potential to change the chaos that is before, everybody. The collapse is enormous, and the only way that this process of recovery will function, and you have to get this in your soul, throw Obama out. If you don't, all of the federal credit that should have been made for the government to uplift every single individual from the government on down to the local, is taken over by Wall Street. Where's the money going? Wall Street. Who's being killed? The people. You will die. You have to join LaRouche, fast.
Annabelle, is Annabelle here? No, Annabelle? Juan Icaula? Juan Icaula? Come on, Juan, you go first right now. I know, and I want Annabelle to get up as well. Thank you, thank you, Annabelle. Juan?
My friend is being harassed over there. He shouldn't be. Why are they harassing him? He's doing nothing. Annabella is requesting a permit for amplifiers and electricity tomorrow here at the park because Occupy LA is having the third year anniversary. Occupy LA is not gonna go away, the people will not be quieted, you know? You are screwing the people, and the people have the right to respond, so you need to help the people with the money you take from the people, all right? And my main concern is, why do you have a lot of people homeless when we have a supposedly great society? Obama was here yesterday recruiting money for whatever reason, $10,000 a plate, that's bullshit.
Thank you, Annabelle Maserigos.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmen and ladies. My name is Annabella Maserigos, I'm from Occupy Los Angeles, very proud to be an occupier because we have a voice. We are an organic movement that we care for the people. The issues that we're bringing about are very important because we feel that we're paying taxes and we are not properly represented. We're being screwed up in other ways, I'm sorry, that's the truth. I have a permit since September the 22nd to have the event tomorrow, but we need a permit for amplifier, and we request from the city to donate the electricity. I have a frustration with Mr. Weezer's office because his staff does not return the phone calls. Last Saturday, he said that there should not be a problem, that they will contact me on Monday. I have not heard anything. Last night, he was at the Downtown City Councilman, and he said to Richard Eastman that he will help us. His staff this morning has not called me. We need this, please, I need that permit, I wanna leave this building with the party.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Herman's next speaker.
As a result of the tyranny of Mr. Coretts on live demand, meeting videos, go to the archives and see under two hours, three minutes, the assault taken here at City Hall. When does this council stop using excessive force on people who are here? Yes, unfortunately criticizing and abiding by the same laws that you break. So at any point in time, it is illegal for you to put your hands on people on a podium end to end when they're not even a threat. It goes to show the legality of your false pretense to represent the citizens of Los Angeles and anyone who's here under your right of freedom of speech. And so, again, it's terrible.
Yes, good morning. The records show that the members of the Hackler Board and the City Council authorize the sheltering of pay of Hackland Coal Craft employees less than six months under a P3 agreement, public-private partnership. And as you know, this agreement was used by approval of the Hackler Board and the City Council, but the Hackler Board and the City Council failed to enforce the restrictions on this agreement. Consequently, 22 years of money has been misdirected from public employees' pays and from public employee pension and benefit plans. Now, you know the problem, and we know that you have the right to a voluntary fiduciary correction program to save you from ongoing mistakes.
Arnold Sacks?
Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks, it's fascinating, thank you so much for your generosity, sir. Part of your public, your presentation about domestic violence was mentioned about the NFL, and I wanted to point out, you know, the perpetrator that brought all the headlines, he had his charges reduced after the prosecuting attorney saw the video. Say that again. After the prosecuting attorney saw the video, he still had his charges reduced, yet when the public saw the video, they wanted the NFL to act. Nobody has mentioned, including this city attorney here in the city, any kind of outrage about the prosecuting attorney in the city of Atlantic City. How could you reduce those charges? So much for domestic violence. And Councilman Mayor Garcetti with the pay raise that he wants about, he said, first and foremost, from a moral imperative, the mayor, moral imperative.
That completes public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? I got a special one from the 15th District inviting all to join in the Buscagno Family Spaghetti Party, Block Party, this Sunday. You can call Mr. Buscagno's office, 473-7015, for any details. This Sunday, Buscagno Block Party, spaghetti, the best, wonderful parents, Councilman Joe Buscagno. Mr. Parks, I see you.
Thank you. I just want to remind the public that the citywide cleanup put on and hosted by the Active Recycling will go on through October 31st. They bring in any trash other than food, liquids, or toxics, and that's located at 2000 West Slauson Avenue. The first truck, car, or trailer load is free, and we ask the public to take advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you, and Mr. Parks, thank you for your leadership on that. Any other announcements that's come forward? A busy weekend for all. AIDS Walk this Sunday, where participating in. Any adjourned motions? Seeing some adjourned motions, please all rise for adjourned motions. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. It's really a sad day to ask this council to adjourn in memory of an aunt of my wife, Maria Elena Gallego. She passed after a long courageous battle with breast cancer. Maria Gallego, 75, Montebello, California, passed away peacefully at her home, surrounded by family, on October 4th, 2014. She was born Maria Elena Robles on May 12th, 1939, in Los Angeles, the daughter of Fernando and Maria Robles. She was a loving wife of 57 years to Raoul Gallego. Maria grew up in East Los Angeles and attended Roosevelt High School in Bow Heights. She lived in Montebello for close to 43 years in the home she bought with her husband soon after they married. Maria worked for the Montebello Unified School District for 25 years as new director at Wilcox Elementary and Washington Elementary. She had a strong work ethic, loved her job, and cared deeply for the children she watched. While undergoing harsh and debilitating chemotherapy treatments, she was known to eagerly get back to work after spending only a couple of days recuperating. She was affectionately known as grandma to the students on campus and mom to her colleagues. She was an avid sports fan who loved the Los Angeles Lakers and Dodgers. She would watch every televised game, often refusing to answer the phone or speak with anyone while her favorite teams were playing. She loved Disneyland and everything Mickey and Minnie Mouse. She enjoyed music and dancing and had a fondness for the talented musical artist Mark Anthony. During her last two weeks of life, while bedridden, her family played Mark Anthony's Vivida Mi Vida as she bobbed her head and wiggled her feet. She'll be remembered for her great sense of humor, infectious smile, and zest for life. For close to 16 years, Maria heroically battled breast cancer with 12 of those years in stage four of this dreadful disease. She fought every step of the way, never accepted defeat, and lived life to the fullest. She was a devout Catholic who prayed daily and found comfort and healing in her faith. Maria thought only of others, even when she was too nauseated to eat and too uncomfortable to sleep. In the midst of her own pain and impending death, she brought peace and inspiration to everyone around her. Maria was a devoted wife, loving mother and grandmother, and dedicated aunt and friend who left an indelible mark on the hearts and minds of many. Her life and spirit will be remembered and celebrated on the morning of Sunday, October 12th, with services beginning at 10:00 a.m. at Geta and Gitteras Martry on Beverly Boulevard. Maria survived by her husband, brother Fernando Robles, four children, Raoul Jr., Denise, Ronnie, and Denno, five grandchildren, Dana, Danae, Renee, Ruben, and Ryan, two great grandchildren, Abigail and Addison, and a host of other family members and friends. May Maria, a great soul, rest in peace.
Thank you. Members, Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I have two adjourned motions. First, I'd ask for adjourned in memory of Comer Cottrell, who passed away October 3rd, 2014, at age of 82. He was born December 7th, 1931, in Mobile, Alabama. He's a natural businessman, something he acquired from his father as an insurance salesman. At age nine, he and his brother went into business by selling meat and rabbit fur to earn their own money. He attended the University of Detroit as a pre-med student, but left to join the Air Force during the Korean War. After completing his military his military duty, he settled in Los Angeles and held a variety of sales jobs when a friend convinced him to start his own business in the underserved black community in hair product market. With $600 and a broken typewriter, Cotrell opened Proline Corporation in downtown LA in 1970. He also found a warehouse, a broken-down warehouse, which he promised to upgrade for a reduction in rent. He saved in manufacturing costs by getting local chemical companies to develop his product if he bought the raw material. Proline became the first product with oil-based spray used to enhance the popular Afro hairstyle. A detangler and spray that held hair in place came next, but his most popular product came in 1980 when the company began marketing Curly Kit. It was the first do-it-yourself product that produced loose hair waves called a Jerry Curl. With his brother James, they turned Proline into one of the most successful black-owned companies in the United States, worth over $80 million when it was sold decades later. He headed the Los Angeles Black Business Association, helped over 40 black-owned businesses through federal contracts. Cotrell moved his company to Dallas to be closer to Proline's largest market and soon licensed his product worldwide. He became the first African-American to be admitted to the Dallas Citizen Council and was instrumental in election of the Dallas's first African-American mayor, Ron Kirk. In 89, he became the first African-American to own a state and a major league baseball team when he and other investors purchased the Texas Rangers. He retired from Proline when it became a division of Alberto Culver in 2000. He's survived by his wife and a number of family members. We also asked if we adjourn in memory of one of our local community treasures, Harold Hambrik Jr., president of the Los Angeles Black Business Expo. Harold was president of the Los Angeles Black Business Expo and second-largest African-American-focused consumer show in the country when he died. He was 71. As the president, he took pride in showing off the history, service, and accomplishments of the black community. He often held this event in the Tom Bradley Hall of the Los Angeles Convention Center. On the day of the event, it often included 400 vendors, nearly 300 workers. Hambrik took pride in the fact that people who might not have seen each other for a long time would reunite at the expo. Attendings could be seen chatting in the aisles, visiting with vendors, and participate in one of expo's signature events, such as the Tom Bradley Business Institute. Born in New Orleans and raised in Slidell, Louisiana, he graduated from a segregated high school with 50 classmates. Three days after graduation, he left the state to join his parents and siblings in Los Angeles. Realizing that he wanted to be part of a development in Watts, he left his job at IPM in 1967 to join the South Central Multipurpose Health Center, which later became the Watts Health Foundation. For more than 35 years, he served in several capacities, including Vice President of Public Affairs. He was involved with the Watts Health Foundation in his heyday when the conglomerate had several business interests, including the Black Business Expo. His family introduced him to world of business and entrepreneurship. His father worked alongside of his uncle in the funeral business in the 50s and 60s. The Hambrik family mortuary started by Harold Senior in 75 in Louisiana remains in full operation with a younger brother, Dural, as the CEO. The siblings of Hambrik have been involved in other ventures in LA and in Plano, Texas, and a variety of other places. He's a graduate of Pepperdine with a bachelor's degree in business, and he's owner of an income tax service on Crenshaw District for more than 30 years. He leads his wife, Marguerite, three children, and a host of other family members.
Mr. Wesson?
Mr. President, I'd like to be a signer on that adjournment motion.
Very good. Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Raymond Cotty. He lived in the Los Feliz area, very involved with all things garden, Los Angeles Garden Club member for many years, creator of the Los Feliz Residents Garden Tour and Art Show, longtime board member for the Friends of the Los Feliz Library, and an active member in the Los Feliz Improvement Association. He will be missed, Raymond Cotty. Additionally, another man from Los Feliz, Ron Weinstein. Wonderful man who, four months ago, got diagnosed tragically with brain cancer. He fought hard. I saw him recently hiking about two months ago, slowly up the hill, but he succumbed to that tragic disease. He was wonderfully involved in the community, also in educational programs and art programs, and is much missed. His services will be held on the 30th of October at the First Congregational Church. He's survived by his wonderful wife, Diane Cantor, a great historian as well. May we remember Ron Weinstein as a great man who served our community well and survived by his family and friends. Members, continue to serve the city well and have a great weekend, and serve the city well on Monday, as it celebrates Columbus Day, but also remember the Native Americans and all who came to this great land to reach out to their high hopes and promises. Thank you and have a good weekend. Thank you, staff.